Okay. Thank you. Thank you for joining us for the January 9, 2018 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Would everyone please join us and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are coming once again upon the celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and a season in which we remember his leadership within the civil rights movement and all those who worked alongside him. We remember him and tell his story and the story of this movement both to celebrate the great strides that were made at that time and also to remember that this work is not yet completed. Dr. King famously said, himself quoting the abolitionist Theodore Parker, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice. There are those who struggle with injustices still every day. May our work here and the intent of our lives be to participate in easing their journey." Before we begin our commission meeting this evening, let us have a moment of silence to reflect upon the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his sacrifice and contributions to our country and all of those who work to make our country a place of equality for all. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And thank you again for joining us for the county commission meeting this evening. If you have a cellphone with you, please place it on silence or turn it off. I'm going to read the ethics reminder for the board before we get started. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to vote, to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters that are voted on by the board this evening. All right, we now come to the consent agenda. So I'll ask Tim Flora to share some additional information on the lottery funds item on the consent agenda.
Commissioners, what this is, this is a budget ordinance seeking some lottery funds to be used for a county school project. So later in this meeting, I'll be bringing a request to you from the School Capital Fund Commission, which is Article 39 sales tax revenue funding for school capital projects. There are other revenue, other options for schools to use for funding their capital and major capital needs. And one of those is Article 4042 money, which is sort of received by those county schools and the city school system, which is just a pass through the county. One of the other available funding sources is through lottery funds. It's not as big a funding stream, but where the School Capital Fund Commission may or may not have picked up a project, the schools actually have options to use other funding sources. And so what this here tonight is $180,000 for the Valley Springs Middle School Phase Two roof project that, and since it did not get funded through the School Capital Fund Commission, actually, I'm not even sure the school system even brought that to our attention. It was just one that they felt like they could fund through the lottery funds. And so those lottery funds, while it's not part of, really part of our budget, it's more of a pass-through, they still have to work those requests through us. And so we, when those come to us, we bring those to you for your approval. So that is what this budget ordinance is about.
Thank you very much for the explanation. I'll move approval to consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much. All right, we move on to the county managers' report, and I'm going to invite Tracy Elliott with the Asheville Humane Society to come forward and share some updates with us about the Asheville Humane Society and its work with the county. Thank you for being with us, Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank all of you for inviting us tonight and asking us to make this presentation. I'd like to introduce two of my colleagues. I know one of them you know very well, Robin Ramsey, who is the Chair of our Board at Asheville Humane Society, and Lisa Johns, who is our Chief Operations Officer. She joined us in July. We recruited her from Atlanta to take a very important position, and we're really delighted to have her with us. So on behalf of the board, the staff, our donors, and certainly on behalf of the animals, the message I want to bring tonight that's most important is to thank Buncombe County, thank the commissioners, thank the staff for the support that you give us, for the investments that you make in making this one of the most progressive and innovative animal welfare communities in the entire country. Asheville Humane Society and the Buncombe County Animal Shelter are viewed all over the country as a model, and people continue to visit us, call us. I know Jim gets calls quite often asking for information from all over the country because they want to know how we are doing, what we are doing. And the answer to that is, we have a partnership, a partnership that works, a partnership that's lasted for 28 years, and we are very, very grateful for that partnership. So we are at Asheville Humane Society going beyond a no-kill community. We have been working with Brother Wolf, we've been working with other animal welfare agencies in the community to be a no-kill community for a very long time. We have achieved that by many definitions, but we're moving beyond that to ensure that every person and their pet in Buncombe County has the quality of life that they deserve, a life worth living. And I'm going to talk a little bit about those particular programs. And I'll move through these slides very quickly because I want to get to the two significant developments I don't want to talk about tonight. But this is just a real quick summary of the progress we have made on an empirical basis over the years. As you can see, intake has continued to go down, live outcomes have continued to improve, the numbers of euthanasia have just dropped dramatically, and the assets that the Asheville Humane Society has been able to bring to the table over the last number of years has grown significantly, too. Our budget net of what you invest in the shelter and our programs has grown from a little under a million in fiscal 2008 to 2.285 million, and those are privately raised funds. You, of course, oh, and I should mention, of course, that the result of all of that is in fiscal year 2017, our live release rate was 93.18%, which is something we should be very proud of. The better news within that number, though, is every single adoptable, rehabilitatable, and treatable animal is saved. The only animals that ever do not make it out of the shelter are those with irredeemable medical conditions that cannot be saved or those that are dangerous for the public. So that's something to be very proud of. And you, of course, know that you all built the county shelter in 2010 and put a significant investment into a phenomenal building, and right next door is the Asheville Humane Society's Adoption and Education Center. Again, that model of them being on the same campus and working together is looked at all over the country for its effectiveness and efficiency. We categorize our programs into three categories: Safe, Adoption, Lost and Found and Relocation; Healthy, our Foster Program, our Behavior Modification Program, and our Lilly Grace Medical Care Program for Shelter Animals; and Thriving, which is our rather new and vastly growing programs in the community, Community Solutions, the Community Safety Net, the Humane Resource Coordinator, which the county funds, and our Targeted Neighborhood Program, which I want to talk a little bit more about. I just wanted to show you the investments that we are all making together in this partnership. So saving lives in the shelter, Buncombe County invested, is investing in this fiscal year $858,000. We added additional $359,000, mostly for additional medical care and behavior and foster care. And AB Tech, an incredible partner out there providing medical care for shelter animals, provided about $160,000 of medical care for shelter animals. That's not community animals, those are animals that are in the shelter that need something additional to save their lives. So we really appreciate AB Tech. I see Amanda's here today. Thank you. In terms of spay-neuter, of course, one of the pioneers of the whole spay-neuter program in this county, Ellen Frost, is here today, and we just cannot overemphasize how important that has been over the years in reducing pet population and saving lives. So this year, Buncombe County is, in terms of spay-neutering shelter animals, investing about $120,000 with Humane Alliance, and we added additional $62,000 to do spay-neuters in the community. Helping pets and people in the community. This is our Safety Net Program that helps folks keep their animals in their homes, safe, healthy, and thriving. Buncombe County provides $90,000 for you, Humane Resource Coordinator position. That is a person who can go out anywhere in the county and respond to calls to help folks with problems they're having with their animals. We put in about $430,000 in those community programs, and I'm going to talk about one that is really exciting coming up in just a moment. And then we invest about $577,000 a year in our adoption programs to get out about 3,000 animals a year into new homes. And we've told you this before, but we're very proud of our transparency and effectiveness. National organizations have recognized that. GuideStar is the not-for-profit transparency organization that gauges the transparency, financial and program impact transparency. We have the very highest rating from them, a platinum. Charity Navigator looks at your program efficiency and effectiveness as well as transparency and honesty. We have, I think this is our sixth year as a four-star charity, which puts us in the top 8% of all charities in the country, and then Best Nonprofits also gives us a top rating. So the two things that I wanted to talk to you about today really briefly were the fact that although we have been seeing significantly lower intake because of spay-neuter, because of something we call managed admissions, where when people come to surrender an animal, we instead propose to help them with whatever problem they're bringing the animal for, and also then our programs to keep pets with their families in the community, has been really, really effective as you look at the previous slide. However, we think because some of the changes in the animal welfare field, some of the changes going on at Brother Wolf, and some other reasons, we are unfortunately beginning to see intake come back up. So if you look at the July to December period, in 2016, we admitted 3,120 animals. That same period in 2017, 3,510 animals. Our total intake, that's a 12% increase. We think that will continue throughout the rest of this fiscal year. However, owner surrenders are still going down by 13%. So we are still succeeding at, when people are bringing their animals in to surrender them, providing them the help they need to keep their animals. That is working. What is increasing significantly is strays. And our, we do not know this for sure, but our, we assume that strays that might have gone to Brother Wolf in the past, folks are now bringing them to Asheville Humane Society. That does, not saying Brother Wolf isn't taking them, I think there's a public perception, perhaps, that that's the case.
Is there a breakdown of cats and dogs?
We have it. I don't, I didn't bring it with me, but I could certainly provide that.
Yeah.
More, way more cats than dogs.
Right.
I can tell you that. The, most of the increase is in, is in cats. And I'm happy to answer, by the way, any other questions about that. I just know that we're going to be working through this. I will say that the fact that we are continuing to save every single adoptable animal is because in addition to, or simultaneous with the rise in intake, we've also had a huge increase in our adoption numbers. We've changed a lot of things about our adoption marketing, we're investing more into our marketing programs, and we are seeing a significant increase in traffic and a huge increase in the number of adoption. So we're keeping up with this right now, and we will continue to keep you updated on that. The other thing that's really interesting is in 2015, we started something called Community Pets. We chose the Emma neighborhood to go and send trained workers, trained community impact people out, and begin to knock on doors and work with organizations in that community to try to help people keep their pets safe and healthy in their homes. And it had a transformational impact in Emma. It worked so much faster than we ever expected it to. We took the spay-neuter rate in the Emma community, if you can imagine this, to 96%. 96% of the animals in Emma are spayed and neutered because of this. The next choice we decided to make was to do something really different, and that is to go to a public housing project. Very different, as you all know, a very different character of a neighborhood, different kinds of housing stock, different population, different problems. And I can say that when we proposed this to the Asheville Housing Authority, they were skeptical, which I think is an appropriate approach to take. This is unusual. You're going to what? You're going to knock on doors and help people with their animals? Yes, that's what we're going to do. But we did have tremendous support from the staff on the ground at Beaverville. And we didn't really know what to expect because it's just such a different place than Emma, but it's going very well. In fact, it's going so well, and I think, I'm not sure if you were provided those letters, but the Asheville Housing Authority has actually requested that we start this program at every one of their properties. And Director Bell, who was skeptical, first again, quite appropriately, is very enthusiastic about this now. So we are extremely excited about that, but of course, we don't have the money in our bank account, and I know the government doesn't want to fund us going to those projects. So we did seek a grant from PetSmart Charities. Interestingly enough, they have been looking to work with a public housing authority to do exactly this all over the country, and they couldn't find any public housing authority that was interested in doing this. When they heard that the housing authority had come to us and that we were having success, they said, "We want to invest in this." And so we just received our first investment of $56,000 from them to open that program in Pisgahview, Livingston, Erskine, and Hillcrest. So we are in the planning stages right now of that. They did not make a multi-year commitment because they don't make multi-year commitments, but they are very invested in this project and said, "We will be with you over a multiple number of years because this is a national pilot. We want to take this program, if it works, and take it all across the country because public housing, housing authorities need to see that this works, that this is transforming the communities that they're working in." So we're very excited about that, and we really appreciate the support that the county has provided in this program with the Safety Net Program, with the, with the helpline that we, that you're helping fund, where people can call in and get help. And we're just really excited to be working with you and with so many other community organizations. So that's really the end of my presentation. I just want to again, thank you for what you do for us and tell you how excited we are that this is a partnership that works. So in fiscal year 2017, together, we saved 11,799 animals. That is an absolute record. Saved in the community, or rather, saved in the shelter, 4,687, and impacted in the community through our outreach programs, our joint outreach programs, 7,112. Thank you very much for this opportunity and for all the great work that you do with us and for us.
Hang on a second.
Yes.
So, thank you. This is, I can remember when Robin came to, where we didn't have these glossy reports. I just had a couple of questions. With the Resource Coordinator, is that cutting down on calls to animal control?
Yes. I don't think as much as we expected because we are, they're actually working, they're getting direct intervention from animal control.
Right.
So rather than people calling in and dispatch sending them to them.
Right.
They, the animal control officers are actually working really closely with Sean.
Okay.
So we're trying to track that as well. At first, we weren't tracking that, and we weren't seeing as much progress in terms of the reduction of animal care calls.
Right.
So we're now tracking those direct interventions where Sergeant Robertson will just come over and say, "Hey, we've got a situation we need your help with." But it is working.
And did Sean get a vehicle?
Yes, he did. Thank you. I meant to, thank you for that, too. We did ask for a surplus vehicle, and the commissioners all said, "We'll find you one," and they did. It's a four-wheel drive truck, exactly what we needed. So thank you very much for that as well.
Well, congratulations.
That is being used every day.
A lot of hard work, and it's great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a resolution accepting an offer to purchase county properties located off Ferry Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you all, I'm sure you remember, about three years ago, the county purchased a piece of property, about 137 acres, from Hendersonville, Henderson County, which also involved the city of Asheville in their way ancient attempt to have a water distribution facility there. That was the property originally acquired maybe 20 years ago. The county bought this hoping that the shoots would come in, paid about $6.8 million for it. Max, do you have that sheet so we can explain? So you'll see there, the total cost the county put in almost three years ago, $6,823,903. Of that, for reasons I do not really recall, that basically half the purchase price, the city of Asheville forwarded to Buncombe County, refunded about half that price. So the county was really out $3.4 million. So we're getting, the purchase price now would be $5 million, so that's $1.6 million. That is actual profit. There's no hitches or hidden gadgets on that. I checked with finance and budget on that. So recently, at the request of a number of, some developers that were just sort of nibbling at the site, we've had a number that have looked at it before as a potential economic development site or as an industrial site, and it just didn't really work right. It's very steep on some sides, there's much less usable acreage on the site than the 137 acres. I think about 80 comes to mind.
Eighty-eight.
About eighty-eight. Thanks. So the current offer now, which we're coming to present to the board, is $4 or $5 million. We have worked with the city to have it rezoned, we've worked with the city to grant the city, with the developer understands, a greenway easement on the I-26 side of this property, which is on the east and south along the river. This would be a city planning issue. It's a city jurisdiction, an old annexation that they did when they purchased the property and became a part of the city. So it's not a, it's not a county development review. The contingencies for this offer, in particular through the contract, is, is that with the city approvals they have to do, and with DOT approvals, they need to improve Ferry Road. In a perfect world, it'd take them about eight months to get all the approvals and permits they need to begin development. And they don't want to spend a whole lot of money on their engineering plans and exactly how the property's going to be used, but it is zoned such that it'd be used as single-family residential or potentially multifamily. And we have our interim planning director here, Nate Pennington. If there's any particular questions on what it could be used for or developed as, he might be able to help with that. So with that eight months, the developer with the offer of $5 million, which is required by statute, to give a 5% deposit, so that's $250,000, which we have in hand, and they have signed a purchase and sale agreement. They can extend this for six months with payments of $10,000 per month, non-refundable to the county, but it would be applied to the purchase price. And if you have any other questions on that, I'd be glad to try to answer. But, I'm sorry. We will run an ad in the morning in the Citizen Times to invite others to come in and begin an upset bid process. So this could not become final for at least 10 days after tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frue. We will take public comment on this, if anyone's interested in commenting, if there's a motion. Are there any questions or a motion?
I'd like a motion for a second.
All right. There's a motion and a second in support of the resolution. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment?
My name is Mary Standard, and it wasn't what I came for tonight, but I am interested in knowing a little bit about the upset bidding process, if that's something that I can inquire about.
Okay, sure. All right, Mr. Rice.
Says I get a little tickle under my feather when I hear money, don't you? Come on, come on. When you got $5 million, you know what I'm going to ask you? What about some tax relief at the end of this year? How about that? Does that make you smile? Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. Now, let's go to the property. More apartments and more housing? For who? I think there needs to be a study done just on how many empty apartments there are around here, and people can't even afford the rent on it. When you live on service wages, service district, waitresses, and jobs like that, how in the name of God can you figure $1,200 a month for an apartment or a house? This is ridiculous. Now here, we wanting to sell a piece of property? Yeah, get their money. But my gosh, let's think about what they're putting on here. Is it for low-income people, somebody that really doesn't need that? What about our firefighters we talked about today? What about our EMS and teachers? Can they afford to live there? They might, but how about owning a piece of property? So those are things. The other one is a big one, too. You always see this building go up, but you never see an impact study done on the traffic and what it's going to do to the neighborhood, the stores, and all that. Let's think ahead before you'd act on something like this and find out if that study has been done yet. Because that's a lot of infrastructure, that's a lot of impact in the community, and it's going to raise the price of property around there as well, but who's going to profit by it? So there's a lot of questions here that needs to be answered. So those are mine. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Commissioner, we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions?
Mike, talk to our area planning gentleman, Nathan.
Is this going to be, do we know if it's apartments, townhomes? Do we know what they're talking about right now?
We don't. There's no application on the table at this time, and the city of Asheville would fully review any type of development application because it's fully within their jurisdiction. They have their own thresholds set up in terms of traffic studies, impact studies, and Asheville's made some changes to the effect that just about every development almost is reviewed by city council. Anything of, say, a subdivision of 50 or more lots, or you can just about be guaranteed that every multifamily development goes before the city council. There's no plan submitted at this time. This is just a consideration of a sale of property within the city of Asheville's jurisdiction.
Well, I've been asked, you know, the question I've been asked is, is what it is, you know, and I don't, I can't, I haven't been able to explain it, so right now, we still really don't know, except it will be a development.
That's correct. There's no plans.
I think it's my understanding, the city council insists on developers devoting a certain amount to affordable housing now.
And they require a traffic study, too, to, to one of the points that's required.
And I think they do devote, make them devote a certain amount to affordable housing.
They have fairly rigorous standards. I worked there nine years, I can attest to that. I've been to many council meetings, and because they actually have a conditional zoning process, they have the ability to work with developers on agreed-upon conditions.
Thank you, sir.
Nate, actually, maybe this might be a Mr. Frue question, but could you just say a little bit more about the upset bid process? You mentioned a little bit about it, but just share a few more details on that.
Yeah, this is, as with any sale of county property, surplus property, it, we can receive bids, or people can just come in and make a bid cold. The county's been trying to sell this property for at least two years. As I said, we had no industrial buyers interested in it for various development reasons.
in it for various development reasons. But once we run the ad tomorrow, there's 10 days, a party would be able to come in and make an upset bid. It'd have to be 10% of the first $1,000 and 5% of the extra. So I calculated it before. So if they're gonna increase the, if any bidder's gonna come in and upset it, they'd have to come in with a bid of $5,261,550. So that process could go on and on until there goes 10 days with no further upset bid, and then the high bidder wins.
Okay, so if anybody's interested out there, this is your chance. This is spectacular property. You've got frontage on I-26. You've got French Broad River.
Near the shoe store.
I mean, it's close to everything. So bring your, bring your best offer. It's gotta meet at least the standards that Mr. Fru just outlined.
Can you go over the?
Right fishing, right.
Can you go over the money again, so everybody understands? Like what we paid, what the city gave us?
Yeah, Max, can you pull that up one more time? County paid just over $6,800,000. It's the city of Asheville. Can you hand that? There was a, there was an agreement between Henderson County and the city, and they just said that Asheville shall cause its share of proceeds to be paid over to Buncombe County for use as a public safety services. So it was paid to the county, that 3.4 million. So if the county's net price for the property is 3.4 million, we're selling it for 5, so we should clear 1.6 on this $5 million sale.
Question on that from a, does that, okay, does that cash flow 5 million, 1.6 million? Or is that put, that puts 1.6, that puts $5 million in the bank? Okay. To simplify it, it puts $5 million in the bank, right? Okay.
And this might be a better question for Tim. So the past manager counted this twice, so that, this is nothing, we can erase all that, right?
Right, exactly. Moving forward, it would be when we sell this property and we get the proceeds from that, that goes in, and so it, it's all new.
Got it. Clean.
Five million dollars.
Clean.
Does that mean this will stay in the city, even though it's out of the ETJ, what, two miles?
Yeah, my understanding would be, require legislation to pull the area out of the city.
So it will be under city permitting and?
Yes, yes. It is, it is part of the city of Asheville currently.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. All in favor of the motion, please?
Do you have a comment? Sorry.
Right, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so the most important thing about this to me is that this takes a piece of property. There was some point of contention when this was, some people voted for, some people voted against it. But now that we own it, that was taken off of the tax rolls. This puts it back upon the tax rolls. In addition to the, in addition to the money being put back into the, into the county fund. So putting this back on the, on the tax rolls is a big, is a big move. It's, that's a bigger move than the, than the additional money that we'll make from the, from the sale of this, is to be able, whatever is put in there will be, will be taxable and will take, should take pressure off of, to a point. Earlier, someone mentioned tax relief, and I agree with that. This will take some pressure off of that to allow us to discuss things like that in the future. So that's one of the big, big reasons why I'm for it.
And one more question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
From what I understand, the, whoever the group is, it's basically building or buying the property, to get into the property, they're basically gonna spend another million dollars on the road to get into it. That's not tied, they're spending that on their own. That's not tied into the deal.
Oh, that's, that's my understanding. That's another $1 million that they're gonna have to spend to work with DOT to do road improvements.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, the follow-up, but that's in the contract you have now, right?
Not directly. It's part of their contingencies. If the DOT, for some reason, said, no, we're not gonna let you improve Ferry Road, then this group can pull out and not buy the property. Just same thing. If the city of Asheville, for whatever reason, said, no, you can't build there. They won't do that. They, they have to follow their rules as well. But there's contingencies. If they don't get the permits they need to do the project from the city, DOT, Army Corps, and Deaner, then they could pull out.
Let me ask one question before we vote. Now, we'll get, well, eventually, 5 million. Now, since the city paid half of that, will this money all stay?
With us.
With us?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you, I missed it. Okay.
5 million goes into kitty.
Yes.
5 million goes in county funds. I think it's, like Tim pointed out, I mean, the 3.4 million and Commissioner Frost mentioned, that's all, that's water under the bridge. So this is all a fresh start and brand-new money.
And once again, we profit by over a million dollars.
1.6.
1.6.
Well, it goes back, well, it goes back same for Mr. Frost. It hasn't been on the tax rolls for 20-some years because of Sloane Henderson County.
Yeah, that's right.
So at least we'll have some more on the tax rolls.
Yeah, it was not on the tax roll.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Good discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ooh, right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fru, Mr. Pennington. All right. Next up, the School Capital Fund Commission recommendations.
Chairman Commissioners, tonight I'm bringing you some recommendations for capital funding from the School Capital Fund Commission. So the School Capital Fund Commission met last week and, or last month in December and had a update from the, both school systems on the update of their projects and where they stand. And there was some additional capacity for funding. So the commission heard requests for some additional funding, and so that is the, that is the request I'm bringing you to tonight. So just a, as a reminder of what the School Capital Commission Fund is, this is a commission that has been around for a while, but a couple of years ago, it was retooled by the legislature that created a commission that helped, worked with the county to determine the capacity of funding needs from that School Capital Commission Fund, which is the use of Article 39 sales tax, which is committed to school capital project needs. And so the commission works with both of the, both of the local school systems. Before, that money was allocated based upon the average daily membership, but now with the new School Capital Fund Commission, that allocated, allocation is based upon need. So the commission works with both the school systems to prioritize their capital needs and then creates a recommendation of funding to you, the county commissioners. The request I'm bringing to you today is a request for $2.3 million of new projects. However, that will be offset by some savings that have been generated. So the request today is for a freezer-cooler replacement system for the Buncombe County School System Central Office, as well as track and field regrading for TC Robertson High School, and for the next phase of the Ira B. Jones Project, which is the HVAC system. So all that comes to $2.3 million. But at the last meeting in December, it was brought to our attention that there were some savings from the Ira B. Jones Project. So those savings are going to offset the cost, the future cost of the Ira B. Jones Project.
Can you, can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, sure. So.
Savings is.
Right. So I think, I think there was about $3 million awarded to the Ira B. Jones Project, and it's a multi-phase. So, so we approved, or the School Capital Fund Commission members and you as the commissioners approved sort of the high priorities, but there were some additional priorities in the Ira B. Jones Project that were not funded. However, once they got into the project, I think they realized that they didn't need the type of roofing that they originally had called for, and it wasn't as, the need wasn't, I think, once they got the roof peeled off, there wasn't as much under it that they thought was gonna be an issue. So they identified that those were savings, and so they came back to the commission and said, these are the savings from this project, and we would like to go ahead and fund the next phase of this project.
So if that happens on any, anything that we approve as commissioners, if there's something that's $3 million and it comes in at half a million under that, then that comes back as savings.
Yes.
It's not spent, so it's not an award that's already gone and that money goes to the school. That money comes back.
Right.
They have to spend exactly that money. So there's no money disappearing. There's none of that.
Absolutely, yes. And in particular, in this situation, the, the county is actually running these projects. So we are paying for them, so, so we're able to keep track of the, the city school projects. This slide really is sort of, one of the responsibilities of the, the Capital Fund Commission, which I might remind you all that there are two members of this board that are on that Capital Commission, Chairman Newman and Commissioner Frost, are two of the representatives, two of the five representatives on that commission, is when we're looking at the funding outlook. And so the commission has already, I think we have approved, I think in the last couple of years, $72 million worth of capital projects for school years 2017 and 2018. And last year, approved an additional $10 million for 2000, school year 2019 projects, leaving a couple million dollars sort of available because we were funding so far in advance in case there were some additional needs. And that is really what the request I'm bringing you tonight is, those additional requests. And so this really, this chart is just really sort of indicating the capacity for projects in the, in the future. And so that really, the recommendation tonight is to reduce the budget of the Ira Jones, the Ira B. Jones Roofing Project by the 1.115 million dollars, and then adding the additional funding for their additional projects, which is the 2.34 million dollars, which really sort of is a net increase in funding that we're requesting tonight of 1.255 million dollars. And so if, and so that would be the, and you have a copy of the, the budget ordinance, the project ordinance to make that approval. More than happy to answer any other questions. Kind of stumbled through that.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments, or motion?
I know that we approved the recommendations.
Second.
All right. We will take public comment on this item as well. So let's go ahead and open it up and see if anyone has any comments on the proposed recommendations of the School Capital Fund Commission. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment? Mr. Rice?
There ain't many counties anywhere in the state of North Carolina, specifically Buncombe is the only one, that has a slush fund like we got here in the building program. Did you hear that? If you don't know it, we need to have a private conversation. When I say slush fund, we're talking about a big one on these taxes that's going for this fund. My concern is this. I don't know that the middle school in Asheville or Ira B. Jones would even have been built at the size that they had built if it hadn't have been for 667 kids from Buncombe County School being transferred into the city schools of Asheville, and this is not a new thing. Now, when you start seeing the city school at a much higher rate funded, and you are transferring kids from Buncombe into the city at that number for years with an S on it, then I want you to think about this capital project. I want you to look at it like you do the library, and Mr. Yelton brought it up on the library. I'm bringing it up on the school. You need to be looking at these individual projects, finding out how many kids go to that school and what the cost per school, and what we're spending on these expenditures for each of those schools, and what the upkeep is, and are we getting the benefit of the dollar when declining enrollment is going down? That's a lot to think about. I'd like to hear the school board discuss some of the things I'm talking about because you can't get a discussion out of them, but they don't know what that is. So I'm hoping you to have a workshop that will bring out some of this stuff I'm telling you. If you don't believe me, just talk to me privately and I'll walk you through it. Okay? You got, you got a free consultant here. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. Okay. And I neglected to mention at the beginning of the meeting, we will also have a public comment period at the, after the other items that we need to address, which includes board appointments. We've got one vacancy on the Juvenile Crime Convention, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have one vacancy.
I'll nominate Eric Robinson.
Second.
All right. Are there any other nominees? All in favor of Eric Robinson, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. On the Nursing Home Board, there's two reappointments. Deborah Kania and Maria Hines.
I'll nominate Deborah Kania and Maria Hines.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We now come to public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave a question along with your name, address, and phone number, or the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. Are there any members of the, and the board reserves the right to deny address on subjects that we previously addressed in the meeting this evening. Are there any members of the public who would like to provide comment at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Mary Standard, and I am a resident of Buncombe County and a registered voter in District 2. In December, I finished eight years as a commissioner for the incorporated town of Montreat. Tonight, I am addressing you both as a former commissioner and as a private citizen. The specific requests for which the citizens of Montreat and I seek assistance would seem to have a simple answer, yet it does not. What is the legal address of the residents of the town of Montreat? I will use myself as an example. My North Carolina driver's license lists my physical address as 118 Shenandoah Terrace, Montreat, North Carolina, 28757. In contrast, my Buncombe County voter registration card lists my physical address as 118 Shenandoah Terrace, Black Mountain, North Carolina, 28711. And my voter polling location at the Walk-Up Building is being physically located at 300 Community Circle, Black Mountain, North Carolina, 28711. It is actually physically located at the center of the town of Montreat and is owned by the Montreat Conference Center. In my former role as a commissioner, I have pursued this issue over the past several years with the state and Buncombe County Board of Elections, and to date, they consider this matter settled, until policy or the law changes, as it is according to the Board of Elections, appears to involve the Buncombe County GIS and/or the U.S. Post Office zip code assignments. I am now asking you, the Board of Commissioners, for help. The address issue directly affects the daily lives of those of us in Montreat with respect to service contracts, job applications, and job denials, service calls, and deliveries. If someone types in a Montreat address seeking driving erections, the, the address is automatically flipped to Black Mountain. The town of Montreat has effectively been wiped off the digital map. Establishing a physical address also has legal and political ramifications as well, including difficulty in voting if voter ID laws are enacted, confusing over our polling address, leading to voting suppression perhaps, questions as to the legal address to use when forming an LLC, estate planning and wills, insurance policies, and other legally binding documents, potential travel difficulties, including a new driving. binding documents, potential travel difficulties, including a new driver's license required in 2020 when the voter registration database lists one address and the driver's license database has a different address. Despite considerable effort, I would ask your, go ahead, okay. It appears that this issue will require the cooperation of multiple levels of government and agencies to reach a solution. It may involve changes at the county GIS level and could be as simple as an authorized coding change.
I did, I think we do need to ask you to stop because we do need to follow our rules in the three minutes.
That would be very careful. I have.
But thank you for your comments, and we're going to ask our staff to, to follow up on this.
And I have for each of you a copy of my full comments.
Okay.
My contact information and a copy of my driver's license and my voter registration card and my phone number.
Okay, and I think we're going to ask Mr. Pennington to take a, take a look at this issue. All right, I believe we do have a short closed session item we need to, I'm sorry, is there another, Mr. Rice, sorry, please come up.
You tend to forget me, Mr. Newman, but anyway, you got your attention? We're ready. Dogs versus human beings. We've heard about the dogs, but we're talking about human beings. Now, I want to show you two numbers, three numbers, and I've already heard some comments that I was absent from a meeting on DSS, but I want you to think about something because I don't think that hits as plain as what some people want us to believe, that you, Commissioners, don't have a say in DSS. The federal government pays this amount of money. The state of North Carolina pays this amount of money. The county of Buncombe pays this amount of money in DSS, state-funded and local-funded. So, you're paying a substantial amount of money, and you're having more discussion on dogs and cats, and more money discussion about dogs and cats than you are these kids that are out here in the most unhumane ways being treated. Now, you're talking about an old professional here, white-headed at that, and don't care to tell you like it is. It's just because of the lack of your understanding of what is actually happening out here when you got an increase of kids of 1,000 in Buncombe County going through the lower-level courts that never gets to the higher court or federal court. It is a shame and a disgrace how that this county is looking at dogs and cats and not looking at our children. There will be some more information coming later, and I've got some examples, but we need to be paying attention to our children. And you talk about school issues, there's two things here in Buncombe County that is contaminating our judges and everybody else up the line. That's the hospitals and the school system. They're turning them into DSS like there's pancakes, and DSS ain't got the staff or the qualifications that they should have, and it's on record from 2004 to present that they don't have the qualifications that they should because the older ones are leaving. That's a good way to end.
All right. Yes, sir.
Chairman Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I had the pleasure today of attending the EMS.
Could you share your name and your, where you live? Could you share your name, please, and where you live?
Okay. I just had the pleasure of attending that today.
No, just, I'm sorry. Could you just share your name with us?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tom Van Slambrock. I apologize.
No problem.
I had the, it was a great privilege to be there today for the meeting that we had there with the fire departments and EMS. Having been a former firefighter here in the county and a medical technician, I have great respect for what they do and the needs that they have. I think it's a, it's a big, tough, daunting task to do what they do, but one of the things, they're, they're looking for more money, and obviously, we have to consider what they need to do the job, taking care of the citizens of the county, those who get in accidents and need our help with their fire services. But I can tell you right now, the proposals of possibly raising taxes, increasing fees need to be the first and foremost on your mind to say no. We're not increasing taxes in this county for any reason whatsoever. What we need to do is think about ways that we can cut spending to help these first responders do their job properly, just like, just like we would for teachers and anybody else that deserves raises, taxpayers that deserve raises. We, we need to step up. Now's the time to say no to no new taxes and move forward with this and then help these people do their jobs. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. I believe we do have a short closed session item, Mr. Free.
Yes, sir. Pursuant to GS 143 318 11A 3, an attorney-client matter to discuss the proposed settlement of a claim. I anticipate no actual, formal action other than direction from the board.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into closed session on that?
Second.
Or a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will return to, after the closed session, but do not anticipate taking up any other public matters this evening.